States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have a moment of silence and reflection? Thank you. Ms. Simba, will you call the roll?
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Present.
Ms. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 18, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have courtesy of the floor. People get five minutes, and I'll call you in order. First, we have Ms. Melanie Christopher say where you're from.
Melanie Christopher, 28 North U Avenue, Easton 18045. I am here to speak tonight specifically to Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Brown. I'm not here to try to change anyone's ideas. It's clear that minds are made up, and quite frankly, as a taxpayer and homeowner resident in Northampton County, I too want the best person to be sitting in that seat. And while I think I have pretty good credentials, clearly there were people who were more credentialed and experienced than I that I would hope that you would choose from. During the interview, Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Brown, you asked me a question about Greysdale, and admittedly, I was not fully prepared to answer that question. That was not something that I thought, based on my credentials, I suppose, that would be something that would be posed to me. However, I would like to take this opportunity to share a more fully researched and thought-out response. Commissioner Kraft, you asked me if I would keep or sell Greysdale, and I still stand by what I said, that I would keep it. Commissioner Brown, you asked me why, and I said because it was, it's good for everyone, and I still stand by that. However, I know that there has been much controversy, and there have been problems with Greysdale, whether to keep it, whether to sell it, the money problems, the staffing problems, and the not being able to fully use every bed that's in that facility. Nursing, unfortunately, is very much like education. In my doctoral work, my dissertation is focused on putting a stop or trying to put a freeze a little bit on teacher attrition. Teachers are leaving education for similar reasons to why nurses are leaving healthcare. Teachers are leaving because of a lack of safety, a lack of support, and not being recognized for longevity, and just not having that ability to grow in a position. If you're a teacher, there's only a few positions you can move up to, and it's quite difficult to get into those administrative positions. As a nurse, the same thing holds true, right? There's only so far you can go up the scale. Nurses are not typically recognized for their longevity, and there are safety factors that come into play for them, and perhaps a lack of support and resources that are also present in education. So, my thoughts, based on the auditor report that was shared in the morning call that you had done a little while ago. The auditor indicated that the pay is not what it should be compared to other places for the nurses at Greysdale. So, my thought process is, you offer a pension that other entities do not for nurses. And the auditor indicated that the nurses at Greysdale are more worried about having money in their pocket now than their retirement. So, in 2011, PISERS, which is the pension system for education in Pennsylvania, they made changes to the pension plan. Those changes weren't the greatest for new teachers coming in. They don't get a full pension. They contribute more and get benefits that are less. And there's an additional option that came on board a few years ago, where they can have their pension, but they can also contribute to something called the 401A, which, for our purposes here, is very similar to a 401K, and it's focused on investments. Rather than putting more money into salaries, perhaps the pension system could be looked at and revamped a little bit. If people are more worried about having money in their pockets, changing the pension system and having them contribute perhaps less will result in more money for their take-home. Sorry.
No, go ahead. Finish your last thought.
Thank you. So, maybe looking at that pension system and revamping a little bit would be beneficial. And the other thing that I wanted to point out was, perhaps instead of looking at an audit for the entire structure from A to Z, perhaps a survey or an audit from the nurses that are there now to find out why they're not, why they're leaving, why aren't they staying, would be beneficial. Every time a nurse leaves, it costs this county extra money to retrain, to hire someone new, and those are my thoughts. So, thank you for this time. Thank you for the extra minute. And that's my full answer. Have a good night.
Next, we have Charles Cole.
Good evening to you all. Charles Cole, 6 Riverton Road, Mount Bethel, Upper Mount Bethel Township. To some of you, my face is familiar. You've seen it a number of times up here. And I would like to say that I fully support the ordinance introduced on 118 by Executive McClure to rescind the LERTA ordinance providing property tax exemption for the RPL property in Upper Mount Bethel Township. It should be dropped, and an ordinance designed to provide relief for desired properties should be reconsidered. The I-2 property covered in the original LERTA ordinance, I don't believe, meets the requirements of the LERTA law. I also want something to target what is high-quality manufacturing. My more detailed comments on this LERTA to the council were sent to you for 2023, and I resent them to you for a reference point. Our township residents have voted overwhelmingly to go in a direction of an RPL development which takes better interest, better consideration of the interests of the community. This was demonstrated in both 2022 and 2023 by the overwhelming elections. So, I fully support what the Executive McClure has submitted, and I thank you for your time again.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Fred Clark.
Madam President, can I have a point of order? If this is going to be on the agenda, shouldn't they be speaking about this issue when it comes up on their old business, when we have public comment on it?
They're allowed to come back for public comment if they want.
Oh, so we do it twice? Okay.
They're allowed to. Anybody who signed up.
Good evening. Fred Clark, 19 Crystal Terrace, Upper Mount Bethel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. At the April 6, 2023 Northampton County Council meeting, I offered comments paraphrased as follows. On December 11, 2017, the Upper Mount Bethel Board of Supervisors approved ordinance 2017-04 asserting that property under development as River Point Logistics Park was qualified for LERTA treatment as it fit the criteria to be designated a part of certain deteriorated areas of industrial, commercial, and business property. This ordinance applied LERTA equally to the Brownfield I-3 Portland Power Plant property and the Farmland Forested Property, I-2 property on the site. It is important to note that the ordinance is silent on what specific characteristics constitute the deterioration of the fields used for agriculture or undeveloped woodlands. It is also silent on what specific characteristics make Upper Mount Bethel an economically depressed community. Section 4 of the LERTA law, deteriorated areas, refers to two laws that provide guidance as the criteria for setting the boundaries for such areas, Urban REIT Development Law and Neighborhood Assistance Act. Before the council votes on the extension of the LERTA, I would like to hear the specific criteria from these laws that were used and what facts supported their use. After my comments last April, the closest anyone on the council came to explaining the application of LERTA to farm fields and virgin forested land was a statement by a member paraphrased, "Well, we've done this before," which is a rationalization, not a legal justification. John Dillinger could have used a similar line about bank robberies. As an unapologetic capitalist, I support the principle that ownership confers certain rights. And in the case of RPL, the developer has a right to develop their land within the confines of the law. But as a strict capitalist, I abhor when government picks winners and losers in business based on considerations outside the intent and limits of the law. The LERTA law reasonably applies to the I-3 power plant property, but applying it to the I-2 farm fields and woodlands without clear justification leaves the decision open to legal challenge in the future. As I asked in the meeting last year, please provide the legal context for applying LERTA to the RPL I-2 property. Done responsibly, the RPL development could represent a boon to Upper Mount Bethel as a property with unique infrastructure assets. It has the potential to bring in desirable businesses to provide jobs and support to tax base. It is obvious to anyone familiar with the community that the one infrastructure element that is clearly lacking in Upper Mount Bethel is a road system that could support large-scale warehousing. The closure of Route 611 North has made it painfully clear to anyone paying attention to the town. Continuing tax incentives that do not mitigate the risk inherent to building warehousing in an area not suited to it would be a misstep by this council. I believe the developer has indicated they will move forward with or without the county LERTA incentive, and that they would prefer to attract manufacturing. If you decide that LERTA is legal and warranted, please ensure it is implemented in a way that incentivizes developing the RPL site to maximize its benefit to the community, and that is not going to be realized by wasting this valuable asset on warehousing or logistics. On the topic of anyone familiar with the community, I heard anecdotally that three council members commented in a recent meeting that they know their constituents in Upper Mount Bethel. I would guess they are familiar with the positions of current former supervisors and town managers, but I'm not sure how many other residents they have talked to since the last election. Since I have not seen them at any town meetings, and I attend most of them, I am reasonably sure that unless they've been reading my public comments to the various UMPT boards and councils, they are unfamiliar with my positions on town issues. To help support the claim that someone knows my position on RPL, I am a citizen that is concerned with both upholding RPL's right to develop their property in a manner that does the greatest good for Upper Mount Bethel and everyone's First Amendment right to point out how that development plan might be improved to meet that end.
Time.
I welcome any council member to reach out to me to share perspectives on RPL and other town issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mike?
I'll waive my time.
Thank you. You can't, again, as Mr. Kraft intimated, that you can also be heard at public comment. Richard Wilford Hunt?
Good evening. Richard Wilford Hunt from Upper Mount Bethel Township. And thank you all for your time tonight. But bear with me, I had a wisdom tooth removed today. The Novocain is wearing off, so I may slur some of my words. I will try to be as coherent as possible. Thank you. So, I'm here to support rescinding the county's LERTA ordinance for Upper Mount Bethel as proposed by our county executive. I don't refute the fact that our township could use additional tax revenue and employment to bring services to help fill gaps in our budget. But what we do not want is an industrial park of such magnitude and scope as being proposed by RPL Logistics. A way warehousing an industrial park in excess of 8 million square feet, a warehousing an industrial park with an estimated 4,210 truck trips per day, 22,079 passenger car trips per day at full buildout. And these numbers are from the November 23, November 2023 Portland Borough Traffic Engineers Review. Portland is a ground zero. I say "we" because many of the residents of Upper Mount Bethel voiced their concerns about this truck traffic, the potential noise and pollution, and the damage to our quality of life. We voiced our concerns in public comments, letters to the editor, speaking with officials, both local, county, state, and federal. But most importantly, we made ourselves heard through the elections for the primary election for supervisor for Upper Mount Bethel. In May of 2021, again in 2023, we replaced four supervisors who seemed not to care about these issues and who we felt had ceded too much control throughout the planning and land development process. Many of the residents have spoken, maybe not with public comments or attending meetings like this, but with their vote, and that speaks volumes. We hope you hear us also. Please vote to rescind the LERTA for Upper Mount Bethel Township. We should not be offering tax incentives to build warehouses on farmland. Other townships and municipalities throughout the region are saying the same. Here in Upper Mount Bethel, we can and will keep our fiscal house in order, and we will find ways to attract small business and more sustainable development for our township. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Not one slur.
I may fall over.
No. Next, Ed Nelson?
Good evening. I too am a candidate to fill this seat, which I hope to do. But I'm here to speak about the LERTA, and you heard me say before, I have a different opinion. In Upper Mount Bethel Township, we have 83% of the assessed land is in tax-free or tax-reduced programs. The development that we refer to as River Point is only 3% of the total property or total assessed land that's in Upper Mount Bethel. It's been in the LERTA. I think now it's 15 years. It's the MedEd property, and it's on the riverside of River Road, and then that would be the east side of River Road and the west side of River Road. And they've been in LERTA for approximately 15 years. The agreement was to go forward for another five. When you compare what that 3% is going to bring in in revenue to the township, the LERTA is small potatoes. The other properties that are tax-free or tax-exempt are not generating any income at all for the municipality. Matter of fact, it's taken away, and that 13% has to pick it up. The negotiation process created a NID agreement with the developer to offset the losses that were going to take place because of the LERTA. So, as far as the municipality goes, the municipality doesn't lose any income. The bigger advantage to this is that the school district is going to probably see about $10 million over 10 years, even with the LERTA in place. So, I would encourage you steadfastly to let the LERTA continue for the next five years, which it's designed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Martin Pinter.
Good evening. My name is Martin Pinter. I live at 39 Lindsay Lane, Mount Bethel, Pennsylvania. Been a resident there for around 17 years. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I stand before you to discuss a matter of great importance to our community, the proposed revocation of the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance, otherwise known as LERTA, for River Point Commerce Park. The decision before us is not about a tax incentive. It's about the future economic trajectory of our beloved Northampton County. The LERTA, as granted to River Point, was not merely a benefit to the developers, but a strategic tool, vital for the economic growth and prosperity of our region. Let us first address the misconception surrounding big-box developments. These are often mistakenly viewed as mere warehouses. But in reality, they are often homes to manufacturing industries that provide stable, well-paying jobs to our citizens. Revoking the LERTA stands in the way of these industries pushing potential growth and prosperity to other regions. Consider the examples of Keurig Ocean Spray and East Penn Battery. These companies have expanded not just for warehousing, but for their manufacturing purposes, vital to their growth. East Penn Battery in particular illustrates the necessity of having warehouse space adjacent to their manufacturing facilities. Their production of batteries for electric vehicles, a field of growing importance, requires storage for these longer lead-time products. It's crucial to recognize that the LERTA is allocated to sites identified as distressed. This designation is a call to action, an opportunity to transform an underutilized area into a hub of economic activity. The River Point Commerce Park site was acknowledged as distressed before its current ownership, underscoring the need for incentives like LERTA to rejuvenate such areas. The development plan for the park includes significant investment in public projects and infrastructure improvements, directly aligning with the objectives of LERTA. These are just not plans, but commitments to enhance the economic fabric of our county. Rescinding the LERTA is just not a reversal of a promise that was made, is a deterrent to potential tenants who are now likely to seek friendlier business environments elsewhere. There isn't a theoretical risk. It's a tangible loss for our community. I urge you to consider the long-term impacts of revoking LERTA. We have the opportunity to foster a thriving economic environment in a region that was built on manufacturing. Let's not hinder our progress by turning away from a program that promises growth, jobs, and prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Thomas Gilmore.
Madam President, esteemed commissioners, my name is Tom Gilmore. My family and I are residents of Upper Mount Bethel Township. I'm here tonight to speak in support of rescinding the LERTA designation for the area of the proposed RPL development. Our township, and specifically the property in question, sits along the wild and scenic Delaware River, a designation that carries special protection. To the north, we're bordered by the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area, one of the most visited parks in the national park system, and the Appalachian Trail passes along the Blue Mountain Ridge. Our town is home to the jewel of the county park system, Mincy Lake. And with the work being done on the Mount Bethel Preserve and the Liberty Trail Project, we will soon boast some of the most beautifully conserved land in the entire Commonwealth. I state this to set the table for my concerns with the granting of the LERTA designation to this project. Upper Mount Bethel Township is not Bethlehem or Easton, long industrial hubs built to support large-scale manufacturing and warehousing. The property in question is not industrial in nature, and as ever, has served a manufacturing purpose. The coal-fired power plant on the I-3 zoned lot is the only parcel that remotely qualifies for such consideration. Since the plant's closure and the halt of the pollution created by it, the area around the property has prospered. Prior to the developer taking control of the property, the area was home to multiple Osprey nesting platforms and home to a nesting pair of bald eagles. These platforms and the trees used by the eagles were promptly removed by the developer. Immediately across the river from the proposed site, the Columbia Dam was removed in 2022, opening the opportunity for American Shad to return to their historic spawning grounds. With the Shad population in decline, any potential harm to adjacent spawning grounds must be avoided. One of the main considerations for the LERTA status is that the property is experiencing deterioration. Deterioration implies that things are falling apart, something once in good condition is now weakened, worn out, or otherwise in decline. Based on this measure, the areas in the I-2 designation are not only not in decline, but are in fact flourishing. Another key measure to whether the LERTA designation can be applied is that the area is economically depressed. This is a more troublesome benchmark. Certainly, the township has been prone to decades of mismanagement and purported corruption. There has been a much-discussed notion buoyed by the developer and led by our previously seated Board of Supervisors that without RPL, the township will go bankrupt. This narrative is false. It's worth noting that none of the supervisors, who are rampantly pro-RPL, chose to run for reelection. Throughout last year's primary, Mr. Pector and his companies peppered residents with billboards and multiple rounds of mass mailings, pushing the narrative that RPL will answer all the town's problems. This could not be further from the truth. Currently, the scope of the development does, however, hold the economic future of our town in the balance, but not in the way the developer would like us to believe. We're already overrun with truck traffic, whether it's the parade of dump trucks pouring in from New York and New Jersey to dump unregulated waste in the East Banger Quarry, or trucks using the side roads to cut across from the Tatumia Interchange across to Route 80. The additional traffic expected from the project will cripple our town. This is to say nothing about declining home prices in the immediate area around the proposed development, a fact that will continue to spread along a wider radius should this proceed as currently planned. While we can agree the township is in need of some economic revitalization, to sell the special character of the place that we live to a large-scale warehousing complex, one that the developer has advertised as the largest of its kind on the entire East Coast, is downright reckless. Tax incentives and vehicles such as LERTA that the developer seeks to take advantage of are not appropriate for the property in question. There are much more innovative ways to leverage the unique character of our area to drive progress, job growth, and economic revitalization. Throughout the country, there are dozens of case studies of places who have similar resources as we do that have chosen to take an alternate path to sustainable growth. Our recent election showed an outpouring of support for the town to go in a different direction. The overwhelming bipartisan wave of support hasn't been seen in the slate belt ever. In a Board of Supervisors meeting last month, when the discussion of the revocation of LERTA came up, former town supervisor Bob Teal said, "Specific to this body, the county doesn't care about us."
Time, sir.
I do not feel that this is true. I trust that this body, the elected county council, will do right by the citizens of Upper Mount Bethel and the greater Slate Belt region and revoke the LERTA designation as it currently stands. Thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Lisa Pector.
Good evening. I am Lisa Pector, representing River Point Logistics. The LERTA program was created to incentivize investment in areas where there's underutilized vacant land and in economically depressed areas, with the end result being to increase the tax assessment and the revenues to the taxing authorities. Upper Mount Bethel has made presentations to this board. Upper Mount Bethel has made presentations to this board demonstrating how of the 28,000 acres in the township, only 4,700 acres in the township pay the full tax rate. That is because of the 83%, as Mr. Nelson stated earlier, there's Act 515 and Act 319, which is programs designed to incentivize agriculture and farming, which there is a plethora of in Upper Mount Bethel, and those programs are great and doing their job, and they do it in perpetuity, unlike the LERTA, which goes away over time. The current tax assessment value of the land in question at RPL is $4.1 million a year. The RPL project at full development has a conservative estimate of 86 million of assessed real estate values. That means that in the second year of the LERTA, which is taxed at the 90% abatement rate, that will create double taxes, double the taxes that are currently being paid by that same piece of property in the second year. We also added on the NID district, which provides 75 cents a square foot at the pulling of a construction permit to give the municipality the ability to buy emergency vehicles, road trucks, road trucks for the road crew, to help with, you know, things within the township. Those emergency vehicles and the road crew trucks help to also support the tax-free entities such as the National Park Service, that is, the township needs to service within its boundaries and other open space areas that do require, you know, increased level of EMS services with the increases of tourism that they have seen in the recent years. We were not involved in the property and the project when LERTA was placed on this property. We were enticed by the fact that there was LERTA on this property. In order to purchase this property, spend the $90 million we have spent so far in developing the land to the preliminary approval level, and we are continuing to invest more money and more time to see this project through so that the town can realize over 86 million in assessed real estate values. Businesses look at LERTA as an incentive when evaluating sites. LERTA means more to a manufacturer and more to their bottom line because they spend more, therefore they're assessed, spend more on the building they're building, so their assessed values are much greater. Logistics uses, it's less of an impact on them in their decision-making. LERTA is not designed to help the developer. It's not designed to, you know, give us a lower rate when we are developing. It's designed to attract businesses and give them the incentive. Real estate taxes are part of their operating costs, and any good, sound business is watching their bottom line. They're looking at the operating cost, and as I said, the manufacturers have more impact. So after they've spent tremendous amount of money relocating to an area, building a building, hiring employees, they are ready to start paying taxes, and those taxes will be twice as much as what they were before the building in year two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lou Pector.
What I'd like to do is have Hunter Kessel speak before himself.
Sorry to get in. I wasn't able to sign up. I came 2:26 there. It'll be quick.
I think we did this last time.
Yeah, sorry. Getting used to it. Well, yeah.
Your last name, please.
Kessel, K-E-S-S-E-L-L.
Thank you.
Yep. So, once again, work with Cushman and Wakefield. This time, I'll focus a little bit more on a tenant's perspective, as we obviously work with landlords, but also tenants on their pursuits, and specifically manufacturing here. So, on a competitive scale, obviously, we're on the northernmost end of, call it Lehigh Valley, with this project backing into what we consider northeastern Pennsylvania as another submarket, which has a lot of tax incentives in it and a lot of manufacturing. So, on a competitive scale, this site is competing to win those tenants over with, call it stuff up in Scranton, Wilkes-Barre, you know, along Hazelton, which a lot of development has happened, further on 80. And right now, for northeastern PA, I believe it's, I haven't written it down, 61 of the current buildings have active either LERTAs, KOZs, or pilot programs on them. Now, many of those are already leased, but the available buildings that are out there, the majority of them do still have these tax incentives. Speaking specifically on some of the active users we see right now, one, they're searching in their manufacturers, one of the requirements is usually, does it have a LERTA or some sort of tax incentive? That'll be a check the box. If that doesn't get checked, the property typically comes off that search and is thrown out, and they focus in on the properties that do. Warehousing users, not so much. Sometimes they care, but a lot of the time they don't. So this taking away LERTA may actually incentivize, or not incentivize, disincentivize manufacturers and push more towards third-party logistics warehousing operations. And I can speak towards quickly here. Right now, let's just name a couple. We're working with Project Tide, which is a manufacturing user in the area looking for a million to a million and five, 1.5 million square feet. They, on their survey, know, have that checked if they really want a LERTA incentive. Project Iguazu, same thing, a million three to a million five. And then Rustoleum, we actually are tracking for about a million square feet right now in the market. And it is worth noting, these large operations obviously aren't looking in very specific areas. They're considering Maryland, they're considering upstate New York, so we're competing with those states as well. It is worth noting, a deal that was actually looking at the Majestic site about a year ago, Tesla was considering them, but they got better tax incentives, even though that does have LERTA over in New York, so they ended up landing in a deal in Newburgh, New York, which is about a million, or just shy of a million square feet. So, I think I made my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pector, do you wish to speak now, or would you like to wait till later?
The benefit of going last is a lot of what I was going to say has already been covered. The benefit is sending my daughter off to school. She's a lot smarter than I am, so she's able to cover it better than I could anyway. So she had points well taken, and I hope you realize the validity of what she has said. The pieces I'd like to backfill on, and we're in a competitive climate trying to do a project this sort, it's easy to do it as a generic warehouse project, come in, get it done, build boxes, and lease them up. And five years from now, we'll have new tenants again as those people rotate. Our choice has been different. We have infrastructure, as I've mentioned before, this supports rail, supports high power, supports water and sewer capacity. We've spent the time and money, as Lisa said, over $90 million to date on this project. It's there for a reason. For Mr. Hunt and Mr. Cole to sit here and alligate this as being a warehouse facility is almost an insult at this point. We've repeatedly marketed this thing nationally as a manufacturing-driven site. It's regionally viewed as a manufacturing-driven site because of rail, because of power, because of water. For us to compete, we're competing with New Jersey, a very, very hard competitor these days. They have a pilot program that has complete abatement, not phased-in abatement. We're competing with Hazelton that has KOZ and LERTA. We're competing with Wilkes-Barre and Hazelton, as Hunter Kessel had said. For us to sit in the middle of that donut and try and compete without LERTA, it's a very hard thing to do. That's the sort of thing that does drive us backward to whatever we can do, and we're trying to do not whatever we can do, but what we should do, and not for any other reason. Our highest profitability is with the best users. If you look at a warehouse, it's a generic core and shell, that thing may appraise at $150 a foot at the most, or be valued at that at the most. So 500,000 square foot warehouse is about $75 million. You take a manufacturing facility, it's more apt to be $300 a foot at completion. Now you've taken that and multiplied it at least twofold, if not threefold. If you take some of the emerging industries, such as the data service centers that are now out there, AI is changing our world, we're in negotiations with data service people. Those people are spending $2,000 a foot. The same 500 square foot facility at completion is worth $1 billion. That's an awful high ratable to put in the center of Upper Mount Bethel, and it's not creating truck traffic, but it needs to be incentivized to come here. Those are highly technical jobs that are in facilities like that. They have huge ratables to help your tax base, Upper Mount Bethel's tax base, and the school district's tax base. We don't get them there without having every tool in our chest to bring them here. The importance of this LERTA is huge, and I don't think it can be understated, and I don't think it should be associated with a paintbrush of just a warehouse project. This is not just a warehouse project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor this evening?
President, if I could just add a couple of sentences to my statement.
You should wait till we do public comment. County Executive Report, Mr. McClure, do you have a report this evening?
I do, ma'am. It's wonderful to see you, Council, tonight. How is everybody? The era of unfettered warehouse proliferation in Northampton County is over. The only question is, what will Northampton County Council do with respect to its participation in the ending of that? Now, I want to be clear about something. We have repeal and replace. You'll remember several years ago, during the Obamacare debate, the folks who wanted to appeal Obamacare had said, "We're going to repeal it and replace it." Of course, they never repealed it, and there was no replacement, but in our instance here today, we have a repeal, and before you, you have a replacement. I provided Ms. Zembo with a copy of the replacement ordinance that we intend to ask you to introduce a few days ago. I hope you've had an opportunity to review that. I believe, Mr. Pector, I believe Mr. Pector wants to bring manufacturing to this site in Upper Mount Bethel Township. But there's another concept from national politics that we need to remember, and that's trust but verify. And that's what our replacement ordinance does. We trust him to bring manufacturing to the site, but we can verify how the county's tax money is spent in that regard with respect to the LERTA designation. And that's what the replacement is. Did you hand that out? Ms. Whalen will be handing out the replacement ordinance.
We have it.
Do you have, do you have, go ahead. Does everybody have it in front of them?
We'll send it out.
Go ahead, hand it out. Brittany, hand it out, please.
Excuse me. We'll send it out. Thank you.
No, Brittany, can Brittany, can I have?
Mr. McClure, could you just give your report? People will get it.
I think it's important for folks to have that in front of them while we're talking about.
They're recording, too. Can we just do the report, please?
So one of the wonderful things about our process here is we want to keep the LERTA area as approved by Upper Mount Bethel Township to improve dilapidated properties within that area. That remains the same in our replacement ordinance. Ensure that a property owner can request a LERTA status for the county taxes for any property in the LERTA area. That's what our replacement does. Allows the county to know what the proposed development is before granting a LERTA tax status. The request is made after the approval of land development within 60 days of the issuance of the permit. We want to incentivize manufacturing. We want to help them bring manufacturers here. The new ordinance clarifies that the county retains control over its fiscal affairs and does not let another local taxing body exercise control over county taxation. In other words, another taxing body does not decide if the property owner should receive exemption from county real estate taxes. The county is in the best position to make that decision. The revised ordinance ensures dilapidated properties get the assistance needed to develop the site into a use that benefits county taxpayers financially and improves residents' quality of life by eliminating plight. It designates the property owner a due process hearing if the property owner disagrees with the hearing board's decision as a matter of law. The ordinance provides for collaboration with Upper Mount Bethel Township and the school district to work together on other issues to improve the designated LERTA area by having a hearing board to address any concerns of the local taxing body and the property owner, and clarifies the county tax exemption determination is not part of the hearing board review process. See, we want to incentivize manufacturing. We do believe him. We want to help him bring manufacturing to the site, and that's why we have the repeal and replacement. And that's what we'll do, we'll trust but verify. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. McClure? Next, we have Old Business. Public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance Rescinding, Ordinance 744-2023, Whereby Northampton County Council Provided for Property Tax Exemption for Certain Deteriorated Property As Defined in Ordinance 201704 of Upper Mount Bethel Township Pursuant to Act 76 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended." Mr. Warren and Ms. Keegan introduced this ordinance at the January 18, 2024 meeting. Are there any questions or comments regarding this issue from the public? You need to come forward. State your name. Again, there's a time limit.
Ed Nelson. Just to add to what I spoke earlier, we just had a visit from Governor Shapiro, who is adamant about economic growth, excuse me, and this LERTA, as we call it, is part of that opportunity. We're talking now four years rather than when we voted on it last year for five years. So you're just going to take away an incentive for somebody to help develop a manufacturing plant as we go.
Mr. Cole and then Ms. Pector.
And again, thank you. I would like to add three quick comments to what I said before and sort of synthesizes what's been said here recently. The comments of the supporters of the LERTA application have discussed jobs, tax benefits, warehouses versus manufacturing. It's been sort of the dichotomy between two of them. We should be looking at Executive McClure's comments and how to incentivize what we would like to see come into the land, the township, the residents would like to see this. Some way to encourage desired manufacturing and discourage warehousing. We need to be looking at something called whole cost accounting and look at the residents' health, welfare, and safety as real monetary benefits or liabilities, and those don't get considered oftentimes. When people are talking about jobs and taxes, they totally ignore the downside of the impact of some of these developments, and I think that's what Executive McClure's proposal would do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other?
I just wanted to make one quick point. The existing LERTA ordinance has an appeals process in it. It's a appeals process where anyone in the taxing district can appeal the LERTA being applied to an applicant that applies for LERTA at that time, and that appeals board is inclusive. It includes the township manager, the school district administrator, and the county's tax assessor. So you're not just, you know, have to go with whatever Upper Mount Bethel deems is appropriate. There is an appeals process, which is inclusive of all the affected taxing authorities, not just one, irrespective of the township's existing zoning on a property. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to call on people. You could line up, and then you could be recognized. It's not school.
Fred Clark, Upper Mount Bethel. Good evening again. If you paid attention during the comments and... If you paid attention during the comments in support of LURDA, what you did not hear was an explanation of how it applies to farm fields and woodlands in the I-2 zone. You did hear about the project's benefits, and I do not deny them. Your job as a council is to apply the law properly. That is the question here. Is the law applied properly? If it is, I'm good with that. If not, it should be rescinded and replaced as suggested. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I just want to add a couple more comments to what I stated earlier. My name is Martin Pinner, again, 39 Lindsay Lane, Mount Bethel, Pennsylvania. There was a lot of talk before that the area is not depressed. I wish Mr. Gofredo was here this evening from the school board to kind of let you know what goes on at the school there and what he sees being on the school board. I have, lucky enough to have two daughters going there and proud to say that the education there has entitled my daughter to be a freshman at Wake Forest University next year. So the education there is absolutely amazing, and I thank our educators there. But one concern that I have is that about 45% of the student population is on free or reduced lunches, covering not just Mount Bethel, but the other, I believe, seven municipalities that that school district covers. To be qualified for free or reduced lunches, you need to have an income of $45,000 for a family of four. Almost half of the student population is on that. That's devastating to hear. I'm proud to be the vice chair of the Board of Trustees at Susquehanna University. And we look at demographics because we know it's a leading indicator of what things to come are. So as the prior chair of the board, I looked at demographics very heavily. I looked at census. I looked at a bunch of those to try to forecast what's coming up, not just two years from now, 10 years from now. We know we have a demographic cliff of 18-year-olds that are going to be coming through. A lot of that is going to impact our community. A lot of them don't want to live in the community because there is no jobs. My daughters don't want to leave. They'd like to come back here and work. A lot of what you heard about the election in Upper Mount Bethel and the replacement of the folks there, that's because they ran on a promise to stop this project. And that's why they're here fighting the LURDA, because they want to inflict as much pain as possible and try to drag this on and kill the project. I have never met a group of people more determined to see a community go down in regards of being actually against the community from uplifting itself. I've never seen that before in my life. And it's very concerning to me when I see that. So I urge you to move along with the LURDA. As the old township manager Ed Nelson said, it's been there for 17 years. Now we finally have something there that's going to add to not just to the town, but to the county. And now the carpet wants to be pulled out from underneath it? Let's follow this thing through. And I'm afraid that possibly Executive McClure's updated policy, that could be argued as quid pro quo, highly illegal in government. You do this, and I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Discussion among council members. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to table this ordinance. And I hope that I would be able to get a second. Can I make that motion to table?
Motion has been heard to table. Is there a second?
Second.
No discussion. Vote on the motion.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
No.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Mr. Gofredo.
No.
Is that a yes?
That was a no.
Or a no?
No.
No?
It's hard to hear you.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Heckman.
No.
Fails by a vote of three to five.
Continued discussion on the motion? Or not on the motion, on the... Any discussion from council? Call for the vote? Vote yes is rescind. Vote no is to retain, correct?
Correct. The rescind ordinance is a A.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
No.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Fails by a vote of three to five.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of selection of candidate to fill Northampton County Council vacancy nomination resolution. After... Okay, we have to vote on the selection again. If an individual is selected, they would have to contact the court administration office to set up their swearing-in ceremony before the February 15 county council meeting. At this time, I will take nominations to fill the position.
Second.
Same procedure as last time. No, we're not. Just say the names like we did last time. It's the same procedure. Nothing's changed from last time. Wait, what are you questioning?
Last time, we filled out the vote sheet like whoever wanted.
Yes, I'm sorry. Did I confuse? So yeah, so he said Paul Anthony. I'm not going to nominate and then vote on the nominations. We're going to do the same way as last time. I'm sorry. Yes, I had to clarify. Go ahead. You can keep nominating or...
Mr. Anthony, right?
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Paul Anthony.
Mr. Heckman.
Mr. Anthony.
Mr. Brown.
Kerry Myers.
Mr. Giovanni.
Kerry Myers.
Mr. Gofredo.
Kerry Myers.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Kerry Myers.
We have four for Mr. Anthony, four for Mr. Myers.
At this point, I'm willing to go a second round. But is there anybody that would even be willing to move on their decision? I can't hear what he's... We cannot hear you. Is there a way to turn it down so you could hear him at least?
Can you hear me any better now?
I'm sorry. John, could you repeat that?
Don't worry. Never mind.
Is there anybody that would be willing to change their vote on the person? Or do you want to go a second round? You may speak.
The first time we did this, I offered an alternative, and I gave my reasons why. But it was obvious to me that that was, didn't get any traction. So I decided to change my vote in the hopes of thus being able to conclude this. So I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know if there's a viable alternative that would get the votes or not. You know, I did that at the beginning, but I don't know if that's going to work or not. So that's why I'm at where I'm at now. Thank you.
Well, I'm willing to go a second round. I'm willing to change my vote to another person in the spirit of getting to five. So I'll call for the second round, and I'll start. And I'll start with nominating Peter Milan.
Mr. Giovanni.
Peter Milan.
Mr. Gofredo.
Peter Milan.
Mr. Heckman.
Mr. Anthony.
Ms. Keegan.
Paul Anthony.
Mr. Kraft.
Paul Anthony.
Mr. Warren.
Paul Anthony.
Mr. Brown.
Peter Milan.
Four for Mr. Milan and four for Mr. Anthony.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we send this to the court since we're going to have an impasse. And I'm not going to go 10 rounds and go four, 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 four.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
I've done this three times, four times, replacing somebody on council, and it's been unpleasant all those times. It's not an easy task, and people are always angry in this venture. And I would prefer council handle it. It's always, we've always managed to handle it. But I guess at this point, I don't know. Apparently, we are at an impasse. First time that's ever happened in my time. And I can see the point in going to the court, even though I don't necessarily agree with it. But I'm going to be in favor of it because, again, I don't know what the alternative would be.
Mr. Warren.
I've had a lot of time to reflect. I think we all have over the past couple weeks. And the one phrase that continues to be the forefront for me is it was said that this council has to be the governing body of the county. I think every single person up here would agree with that. I think every single person who was elected up here on this dais would agree with that notion. I certainly do. And I do wonder why the thought process is though that it would not be the governing body with Mr. Anthony as the ninth member. It's a question that I pose. Nobody has to answer. However, it's something I've given a lot of thought to. Credentialed. Quite the resume. Why wouldn't it be a governing body without Mr. Anthony as the ninth member? So that's it for my comments.
Yes.
So I agree with Mr. Warren. Mr. Anthony is on three committees for this county. One for the last eight years. It's almost a decade that he has dedicated his time. He has proven himself. He had the bridge project. He brought it in on time, under budget. He showed his leadership. He showed his dedication. And so I also had to reflect on, why wouldn't it be a governing body? I've said that I am here to represent the constituents, and I would vote in their best interest. I am not, the derogatory term, a rubber stamp. I actually was really insulted by that. I don't know where that came from. There's no evidence of it. And it's an assumption. And so you're also assuming that Paul Anthony would be that, too. It was said. So I don't know where that assumption came from. And it's derogatory. It's insulting. And it also violates our Code of Civility 1-B. Mr. Anthony is the most qualified for this position. And I don't understand what the problem is. I don't know why we want to go with somebody that is less qualified. You call us rubber stamps, but it seems that you want your own. I'm done.
If you're offended by rubber stamps, hold on to your hat because the next four years, you're going to be called a lot worse than a rubber stamp. Trust me. I'm just saying. And don't read social media.
But up here, it highlights the code of civility.
I didn't use that word. I didn't know that somebody used that word. Oh, okay. I have a bad tendency of wanting to inject a little bit of levity at times.
Anyone else need to make a comment?
I'd like to just say that you made a motion. It's been seconded. I'd like to call for the vote if, you know, because we're just going to banter on about the qualifications of everybody, and I think we should get to it, please.
Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
No.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keegan.
No.
Passes by a vote of five to three.
I have prepared a petition for council's eventuality, which has happened. It's my intention to present it tomorrow morning in motions court at 9:00. If anyone would like to be there, you're invited.
What are you presenting on council's behalf?
A petition to fill the vacancy.
Just a blank petition? Just this vacancy needs to be filled, and you have 15 days to do it?
It sets forth that there was a resignation. There's a home rule charter. We've had two meetings. We've had, I believe, and I've asked our staff, we have 20 applications. And as we've talked previously, the court is not bound by the applications, obviously. They could appoint who they would...
Okay, that's just what I asked. I understand what you're saying, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there any other business to discuss?
Is public comment allowed?
No. Is there any other new business? Are there any committee reports? I have one liaison report. Last week, SECAP board met in Harrisburg, spent the day in Harrisburg unveiling their priorities. The spring conference for all SECAP members will be held on March 3, 4, and 5 in Harrisburg. There were several sessions spent with the legislators regarding the 2024 priorities, which have been sent out for everyone's review. And that's all I have. Yes.
Are we going to be provided our committee assignments at some point in the near future?
Yes, I'm waiting to fill a vacancy.
Okay.
Well, I have some preliminary county... I have some preliminary spots filled. So if I can get three so we could get started with business, I'm willing to do so. Clerk's report?
Nothing.
Solicitor's report?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.